has been approved. We have two presentations tonight, and I think many of our guests here tonight are here to see the update from Rice, Fergus, Miller on the South Kitsap Community Center. So I think Steve Rice is here, and Brandy, are you prepared to let Steve share your screen?
Absolutely. So I think, sorry, so I think I would make him co-host, and then Steve, you should be able to share your screen from there.
Brandy, if you would do that for me, I'll be the one that shares the screen.
Okay, absolutely.
There we go.
Welcome, Steve and Laurie. So take it away.
All right. Thank you very much. It's nice to be here again. It's update time. It's been one month since we visited you before, and the last time we had really a full check-in with you was on October 20th, so it's good to be back. And Laurie has been steering the ship, navigating really, really well, and we've made a lot of progress since we were last with you. I'm going to ask Laurie to kind of explain the agenda for tonight, and then she and I will kind of take turns.
Okay, I'll share my screen now. We all see it? Okay. All right, so what we're going to do tonight is first we'll just do a brief recap of our schedule, what we've been up to, and where we are today. And then the meat of our presentation is really to share with you a few things. One, share with you the results from the last public outreach on the South Kitsap Community Event Center. Then we will talk about the final three site options that have been chosen by the steering committee, and she'll also share with you the three site and building concepts for each of those sites. And then after that, we'll talk about the next steps coming up here in the next year. So with that, Steve, do you want me to go through the schedule?
Sure, thank you.
Okay. So this is a condensed version of our schedule. It just kind of shows you what we've been up to since the last time we were in front of city council. Like I mentioned, we had the public outreach, and so we're going to share that result with you. And here we are today on this red dash line at the second public outreach that we're doing here at the city council meeting. As far as the site assessment and concept planning has gone, from the public outreach, we've finalized the building program that we are proposing for this community event center. And then we took that building program and came up with the three different layouts in three different sites as a point of discussion, which will be the basis of a final site selection moving forward. And it's over to Steve to talk about the results of the public outreach.
Yeah, so public outreach is kind of the first thing on our agenda today, and I want to recognize Josh and Sarah Johnson. I know they're here on the call. They're a subconsultant to RFM. They're locals in your area. They've been involved with the Imagine Port Orchard work now for almost three years, and I really have to congratulate them on the level of work that they've done and how they put this result report together for us. I want to thank Josh and Sarah. And I may, I may ask them to help me explain something here as we go along. So, you know, there was a large survey done, and we want to go through a few pieces of that with you. So Josh and Sarah put together some, some statistics. I know these kinds of things are interested or are interesting to city council folks. Things like open rate, number of emails on the IPO email list, the number of persons who reached the site on Facebook. And I think the next slide is even more interesting, so why don't we hop to that one? Statistics about participants. Almost 2,000 people clicked the survey that was launched. Over half of them started the survey, and 613 completed them. But when you look at that, and you think, well, gee, only a third of them completed, you don't know why exactly. How many completed and who didn't? But when we think about the very robust numbers here, getting 613 different respondents to weigh in and give input on the survey for our area, I think is pretty amazing. And another reason why I think we ought to really, you know, thank them and the city for getting this out there and making it prevalent. Clearly, a lot of people were interested in this. So let's go to the next one. So kind of the first thing that was asked is, can you share some words with us that describe kind of how you see Port Orchard and South Kitsap as a place to live and sort of moving forward? If we think about forward progress. And, you know, all of these words showed up, and the larger texts are the things that were mentioned most often. No surprise that community is the biggest one, and I think speaks to kind of the vibe in Port Orchard that it's always been a very welcoming kind of place. And so what can we do to enhance these things? Safety is a very dominant word here. These are things for the design team to keep in mind. So now that some meat, kind of part two to this had a series of 14 or 15 or 16 questions, and you can see them all kind of listed here. Kind of the question is, you know, which of these things do you think is, is most important? Which ones would you rank as very important? And, and they have a choice to rank, you know, very important, maybe somewhat important, not so important, not important at all. And it's interesting that you look at the kinds of things that attract the most attention. Space for community festivals down near the bottom, covered outdoor areas for all season use, and by the same token, see some things that are named less often, but these are all part of the very important category. So it's interesting for us to see these and keep them in mind as we began planning a building. Let's go to the next slide, Laurie. Space for community festivals, and this was the number one, you know, highest response for very important. And when I think about community festivals and the fact that we're designing an event center, I think there's a lot of alignment here. And by the word festivals, it's kind of interesting how that question was asked. Festivals, you could think of as rather small scale, or you could think of as rather large scale. And when we think about this building and its potential placement, we're going to talk about that in a minute, the ability to host festivals or be a centerpiece for a festival, or where the touch point for events is whether those events are in the building, outside the building, in the town, or some combination of all of those, we want to make sure that the building we designed can do those things, can do all of those things, because clearly, the community has said, you know, this is how we see the true value of this building. Next. Covered areas for outdoor use. It sounds like a lot of people have lived in the Northwest a while. And I see some of you smiling. And, and if you, if that made you smile, you probably have lived in the Northwest for a while, and you know that it's, it's difficult to kind of get your money's worth out of even the place where you live unless you can also sort of somehow enjoy the outside as well as the inside. And by extending indoor space with covered areas, it increases our ability to enjoy our place, our home, our event center, our community center, our school, our library, whatever it is. And interesting to us how this ranked so highly. And again, something that we will be very cognizant of when we start to shape this building. The city should be the catalyst for downtown redevelopment, the foundation for what downtown can become over the next 15 to 20 years. And this isn't something that Rice, Fergus, Miller dreamt up. This was a quotation, where the survey that Josh and Sarah put together gave people an opportunity to just talk a little bit. And Josh and Sarah, are you able to share a voice here for a minute? If you are, I'd love to invite you to say something about this and maybe the quality of the things that people said, and, and why you chose this one.
Yeah, hi. This was one of my favorite quotes of the whole, all 613 feedbacks, just because I felt it really captured what we're trying to do downtown. There was a lot of positive feedback for the survey, maybe just a handful of people on the opposite end. And so I felt like this really captured in one sentence what everyone was accumulatively saying together.
Yeah, a lot of optimism was expressed, just a lot of, a lot of pride, a lot of community optimism, and a lot of forward thinking, you know, looking to the future.
Thank you. And, you know, this is really great because I think moving forward and, you know, making presentations to the community, to the Kitsap Public Facilities District, the fact that we've gotten such robust response, and we see things like this, they're just a validation that the community is really ready to use something like this. And we know that it can be something for everyone, as well as host these events that we would not otherwise be able to see in Port Orchard and attract revenue. So these are, I think, really, they are foundational statements and should be a foundational building. What's next on this section, Laurie? So some pointed questions were also asked. If you can imagine something new for Port Orchard's downtown experience, what would it look like? And it's interesting, you know, what respondents have to say. And, you know, these were sort of handpicked. I don't see the word marquee here used in the way that it's currently used in, in Port Orchard, but a marquee building, meaning one that's a centerpiece would maybe be another word. Where, where everything is really done nicely and is, is high quality. The idea of the building being experiential, I love this because we also have some ideas for how the public can enjoy the building if they are not going to a specific event there, or, or maybe not even visiting the library on that particular day, but they just happen to be going by. Ways to interact with the building is super important. And so it can be part of the waterfront experience and tied to the trail. That's exactly what we're after. And then parking, parking, parking. And, you know, I will just say that when we get past the break at year end, and we move forward into Phase 1B, we have already been compiling parking data with the city's help, and I want to thank Nick Bond for his help in doing that. We have a lot of information about parking. We have spoken to other stakeholders about parking, the development partner about parking and how parking will work. And I want to tell you that the goal here will be to show how new parking that's created as a part of this master plan work, together with existing parking, can really support some amazing events here. And then if we're careful about how we think about the timing of those events, that things should work together very well. But we know, you know, parking is a really sensitive topic. Excuse me. And the CEC building by itself is not providing a large complement of parking around it, and so it needs these other sources to work, and it will bring new parking as a result of the master plan. So I want you to know, city council members, that we are thinking hard about parking, and parking will be an important part of any presentation. How important is green building? Everybody has a lot of different ideas, maybe, about what green building is and its value. It's interesting that in a community that, that I don't think is probably constructed, new public buildings that are rated as maybe passive house buildings, or green gold buildings, or lead buildings, that half of the respondents say it's very important, and a good member, or a good percentage of the rest, attach some level of importance to this. It's great to see. And I think we're almost done with this portion. Do you live in the city limits? 41, yes. 59, no. But we're, we're betting that many of the rest of them live in South Kitsap. And then how many actually work within the city limits? And almost 30%. So some demographic information for you. And I believe, is it true, Laurie, that that's our last slide in this section?
Yes, for the public outreach, yes.
So before we move on, Josh or Sarah, would you like to add anything? And then this might be a good time. If council has any questions about public outreach, now might be a really great time to attempt to answer them.
Josh and Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just to kind of add that we were also really pleasantly surprised with the level of engagement and outreach and the support of the city and the Kitsap Regional Library with the messaging and outreach was, was incremental, but it was so encouraging to see how many people came out of the woodwork with ideas, with passions, with really with a lot of pride, like I said, optimism and forward thinking. And I just want to, I don't know, just pay, pay homage to everybody that filled out the survey, that took time, and really expressed their vision for what our community should be for ourselves and for our children, for generations to come. So it was just a really great experience, and so I thank everybody that took a second to do that.
Thank you for sharing.
Any questions from the council before we move on?
Council members, do you have any questions about the outreach?
All right. I will say thank you to the library, too. You know, they have quite a database. They have quite a way to reach their community already, and they were very helpful in pushing this around. Okay, let's move on, Laurie. Laurie, you want to do this one?
Sure. So I mentioned earlier that we have been reviewing several sites, and now we are down to the top three sites that we are going to present conceptual plans for. So the first one here, Site Option A, is where the existing Kitsap Bank currently sits, right at the bend of Bay Street, right by the water, and here's the marina. Our Site Option B is over here by where the library currently sits, right by the ferry on Sydney. And then the third site option is on the other side of Bay Street, right here, where we have an ongoing, I believe it's a retail building, a business and a large parking area, also owned by Kitsap Bank. We started out with six sites, as you see here. There was a number one site, if any of you are familiar with the master plan that was presented to the city originally. This site here, where the current 7-Eleven sits, was where the Community Event Center was proposed. But as we evaluated all the sites, we discovered that, we realized that that site is not available. Site number three over here was a discussion earlier on because Bay Street and Sydney, being sort of the heart of downtown of Port Orchard, we thought that maybe this would be a good thing to look at. But as we evaluated the shape of the, the site and how that lays out, also didn't work out very well. And then we also considered this site six here, which is also another property owned by Kitsap Bank. They currently have their drive-through banking right here, and you've got some marina parking. So you'll see later on, as we show you the master plan and how our CEC relates to that master plan, what this site is leaning towards becoming.
Okay, thanks, Laurie. So the last time we met with our steering committee, which does include some folks from library and, and now the school district, and members of, one member from KPFD, and of course, your own staff. We walked through the building program, you know, which we won't do tonight because we've already done that with you guys. It, it hasn't changed very much. But the point here is that we want to show, show them kind of what design work looks like when you're, when you're actually trying to give graphic form to the program and test it against the attributes of these three sites. And so we're going to walk you through kind of what the end result of that was. Laurie, why don't we go to the next slide? We kind of get in love with the messiness of design. So Site Option A, you know where that is, and you see the rest of the master plan sort of embracing it. You can read those words and kind of know what they mean. And let's go to, we're going to zero in on Site A now, on Option A. So our site, our site concept and our site test diagrams that will be used by the selection team to rank each of the outcomes on Site Option A, Site Option B, and Site Option C, this being A, they look like this, and they contain this level of information. So I wanted to explain sort of what we're aiming for here. So between the public outreach and the program, we know there are some key things that need to be accomplished. And so you're familiar already with the site criteria that the team will use when they rank the sites. We needed to take the work to a level where the selection team could make sense of how well any of these three schemes performed against any of these criteria. And of course, we'll be there to help explain. So they have some tangible ways to think about these and judge them accordingly. So we are not designing a building in three dimensions. We do that when we get to Phase 1B, which is after the turn of the year. But we use these, call them user diagrams, or the building's program put into two dimensions at scale on the property so that we can see how it fits, what pieces relate to other pieces, how they relate to the outdoors, what are the attributes around the building that can be used to, let's say, extend the life of the building into three seasons or four seasons. All of these things, we needed to somehow illustrate. So we developed a way, a graphic way of explaining how this community event center begins to take its shape on the site at scale. And you can see, I'll walk you around this one a little bit. The Bay Street, of course, and over on the right of the building, you have Orchard Avenue, which goes up to where your new sewer lift station will be, and the generator, you're familiar with that. We laid in the shoreline master plan that's been adopted along the water. We combined a lot of different files for this, survey files, street files, to make a composite that we worked on top of. The colored areas represent potential arrangements for things, but we didn't get too heavy into this. It's mostly a scale exercise at this point. I would expect all of those things, those colors, to change and move around as the time comes for that in schematics. But it gives a really nice idea. Oh, man, we practically double the usable space by locating on this site because we have a waterfront porch that is kind of colored green or gray. We call that usable hardscape or landscape. So you can imagine moving in and out of the building and using this together for festivals or events, really a pretty wonderful solution. An obvious entry. We do take care of close at hand loading and unloading for the library and event space. Want to make sure we have really good pickup, pickup and drop off. So we highlight those things so that it's easy for the selection team to make sense of what they're looking at. And then we also did upper floor space, just so the, the selection team could, could see that. So Laurie, we could maybe go to that. And obviously, we leave the ground plane behind, but the idea of purple being library space, or blue being event space, and orange being common space, or open to below, being able to get outside on a deck, a covered deck, that sort of thing shown here. And, you know, Site 2, I won't presuppose anything, of course, but this original Site 2, what we call Option A, is a, is a very tasty site from a planning standpoint. So Laurie, let's hop maybe more quickly onto the next two. We'll move over to Site B, which is where the current library sits. And if you remember from the, the criteria, you know, this site, while it's amazing in some ways, isn't able to fulfill some of what Site 2 does, but still is worth testing. And we wanted to make sure we had one that was outside the master plan that was proposed as a what-if, and an in case. We wanted to be able to have an option. And we knew this site, you know, presents a lot of complications with transportation. There's a lot of things coming together right now. It's, it's, it's a, it's a very involved site. Obviously, the library already lives there, so it creates problems for them if we were to, you know, ask them to move. But nonetheless, let's hop into the site plan. This is a smaller footprint, and it realizes a three-story building, not a two-story building. A long skinny building with some open area in the middle, a lobby area in the middle, lots of opportunity for view and outdoor space, and really kind of right on top of the water. Nick's great work in adding in 2021, the water enjoyment use into your shoreline master program code, I think gives us a great deal of confidence that we could, we could do this if we wanted to. But it's a more constricted site. But it fits, it works. Why don't we go upstairs, Laurie? We're proposing, you know, that transit sort of move back behind, and, you know, we haven't talked to transit about that, and we probably won't need to. But I think to make this project really work, we would want to get traffic off of what little area there is between the building footprint and the water, and use that for event space and enjoying the outdoors, and creating a new access for transit on the backside. And that would be where the access for, for the public would be as well. So it could work out very, very nicely. Obviously, complicated, lots of other things have to happen, lots more money involved, et cetera. But I think a really exciting solution in some ways. And then Site Option C, which the selection team will look at, is really a piece of, a larger piece of property that you all know, includes 640 Bay. If we were to zoom in on that, there's a pretty nicely set way to handle this site with layers of parking underneath, with a large stairway that goes from Bay Street up to Prospect, adjoining Port Street where we expect there to be public access to the water. A really great solution. It's a matter of, well, we don't need the whole site for the event center. It's way too big a footprint for even if we were all on one story. And this site has value for other uses. And it so happens that this southern half, where the color is, works a little bit better for the event center to sit on top of this platform. So would be at grade with Prospect Street and higher than that. So two stories starting at Prospect. And then the developer would most likely use the northern block for residential, which is a really nice, you know, bigger, longer size, which works great for multifamily housing, as you can imagine, double-loaded corridors, that sort of thing. So that's sort of a, a quick overview of sort of how those plans came together and what the team, the selection team will use when they're looking at criteria and, and doing their scoring. And it's just been great to work with Columbia Hospitality, been great to work with Kitsap Regional Library, and of course, your own staff on helping to imagine how all of this could go together. It's been, it's been helping to imagine how all of this could go together. It's been, it's been, I think, a really successful exercise. I think we're at a good place with the right level of definition, not too far, but enough that is understandable, that, that they can make sense and they can make good judgments. Lori, am I forgetting? Was there more to look at? So again, I guess I would open it up to you, mayor and the council, if there are any questions for me on what I just shared.
There is one more slide, Steve, and that's the next steps. And you want to go into that and then we'll talk about, ask, take questions.
Lori?
Steve, which one he wants to, or I can.
Yeah. So like Steve explained, so we've got those three options. We have scheduled right now in December to get together with the site selection committee. And that committee is made up of some of you here at city council, folks from the library, from KRL, Kitsap Regional Library, of course, the mayor is part of that. And I believe there's a couple other people like the Kitsap Transit and KPFD as well. So it's a representation of a group of people that will be sitting down with the site selection criteria that we presented to the council before to review those. And the intent is that by December eighth, we make a recommendation out of those three options, which one is preferred. And hopefully by January, when we present to KPFD, a final decision is made. And that is when in February, our team starts the next phase of our design, which is the schematic design.
Thank you, Lori. So mayor, I'll turn it back to you and the council.
Council members, do you have any questions about our process and where we're at today? I think it's been great work, great working with Rice, Fergus, Miller on this project. And I think process we've been, has been very, very thorough. Questions or comments? Councilmember Clausen?
More comment than a question. It just, it's very impressive to see. You can clearly see there's been an awful lot of thought and discussion that's gone into the selection of those three sites and trying to determine which is the best. So to me, it looks like the process has been thorough and great. And I look forward to the next phase.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilman, thank you, councilman John. It was a part meeting yesterday and they were commissioners. Today they're, they're council people.
Understand.
Councilmember Deener, do you have a question or a comment?
No, I just wanted to follow up with John. I also appreciate how rapidly this has been moving. I know that it's, it's very important and we don't want to overrun the public process, but it's also important to keep it moving along and to meet deadlines and fiduciary obligations. And so I appreciate the good work.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? But councilmember Rose Pepe, go ahead.
Well, I'll follow up with a question. So what additional community outreach is going on or will, you know, when does it stop?
I'll let Lori take that one.
Yeah. So between now and January, this is the last one. However, as we move forward to the next design phase, there will be, I believe, one or two more similar platforms where we show progress of that design. So over the next several months, you're going to have another one of these public outreach. Originally, of course, when this was thought of, we would all be in one room, looking at actual drawings and presenting to each other. But obviously, for as long as we have COVID, we're going to do it this way through these city council meetings. But yes, there are more intended along the way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, councilmember Kachari?
Mayor, I was just gonna say, I really appreciate from, you know, the statistics on the demographics of where people are responding from, right? I know we're in, in Port Orchard, but in all reality, for a community center standpoint, you know, this has the potential to draw from a much larger geographic region like the district of our libraries, like our school districts. And so it's great to see the additional feedback from, from the, from the larger community. So, so great job of, of getting that reach beyond just the, the Port Orchard city limits, because I think it will be a magnet that draws from a larger area.
Yes. And a recent addition to our steering committee and our site, and who also will participate in our site selection committee is Superintendent Winters. And he's been a great addition to, to our group. With that, well, thank you, Steve and Lori. I appreciate you coming tonight and I look forward to seeing you back at our next council meeting, sharing the results of the site selection committee.
Thank you.
It's great every time. Thanks. We really love coming and sharing. So you'll see us many more times. And thanks again for the good feedback and always the nice hospitality.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Goodbye.